Patch it, but fourteen inch pipe is not really manufactured anymore. We have about sixty-five hundred feet of fourteen inch pipe in the city, including all of this stuff here, and we have one single stick of twenty inch, or fourteen inch pipe, so we've got twenty feet long. We don't have any bands on either side to be able to repair it. Long story short, originally what we were planning on doing is patching this little bit up into there. We got pricing for that, and that was about twenty-eight thousand dollars to do that with a bit. We started looking at other options to try to fix that, and we came up with this. The blue is what we're proposing to remove. The red is what was originally in the project, so we're planning on doing that. We're looking at replacing this fourteen inch with new PVC pipe. The problem that we're running into is connecting this fourteen inch or this fourteen inch into the sixteen inch down there. The reducers to go from sixteen inch down to fourteen inch is extremely difficult to find just because they don't make fourteen inch pipe anymore. We're looking at getting those actually from Texas, from the plant that manufactured. So what we're looking at doing is basically making it done right, the way that it probably should have been done when that, when the tower was taken down. I suspect the reason it wasn't done at that point in time is because the parking lot was in better condition than it is now, and so when we started pulling out the blacktop, started looking at what we've got out there, we started to find that this pipe is starting to grow quite a bit. So, total dollar amount that we're looking at tonight, parts alone, is about thirty-nine thousand dollars for this here. I would look tonight for permission to get some of that material and pieces in place. We've already started, you know, talking to firms to get them, or to get them in place because we saw this on, well, we opened it up on Tuesday, Wednesday, we started making phone calls, and they're scrambling to find those pieces for us. I'd hate to see what would happen if we actually had an issue where something like this actually broke significantly and, you know, water was coming out of the ground more than it at the moment sound. They're able to patch it with some lead joint that we had from before, but if it was actually broken, it would've been, you know, well over.
Their main line will flow through there all the time?
That's our main line, yep.
How was it farther on both ends?
We haven't dug over here. We're gonna find where, you know, where the pipe looks sound, be able to connect up to. Right now, we've got all of this stuff in the middle here that is really not needed. It was used at one point when this was the water plant and the tower. Now the plant is up, you know, over here, and the tower's over on the east side over by Walmart, so we don't need all that piping in there. We're looking at cleaning that up. We're looking at pulling out, I think I call it thirteen valves in there, putting back only three of them so that you can isolate the areas that you need to as opposed to try not, you know, chase it in a circle to get back to where you need it to be. I wish I would've known what was underneath there beforehand, but until we dug down, we didn't, we didn't know what was underneath in terms of the condition of that pipe. So, forty thousand is just the material. We'd be looking at having the contractor install it. I've gotta get a price from him on that yet, but I want to get approval to go ahead and get those pieces here so that we can get that going.
So my guess is there's not a lot of options.
There's not.
Not that many.
Doing that?
True. And are we gonna have the parking lot done by call?
Oh yes, if we get those parts. You know, included in that forty thousand dollars in material, I wanted to get some extra pieces here. I wanna get a couple of extra bands, just in case somewhere else in town we, we get a break, then we can at least attempt to fix it. You know, it's not guaranteed that we're gonna be able to fix it with pieces that we have, but at least we'll have something on stock to be able to, you know, repair something in the event that it happens. Right now, we just have a stick of pipe, and that's really, we don't have any bands to go on either side. It's just a, just a pipe that's not really used anymore. It was used in the thirties and since then it's not, it's not thirty.
So we need council action on that one then, Greg?
Yes.
What you're looking for, is we need to add that one to the agenda?
Yes, please.
Get your eye under new business? Something in the budget we can postpone?
Should it come out of the water improvement fund? Well, it's two separate funds, so.
The equipment fund with the top.
Yep, I know where you're, where you're going.
You may have any questions for Greg on that one? Did you wanna do anything with the warning star?
We can talk about it in the regular agenda if you want.
Okay. We'll adjourn to the regular meeting, take a three-minute break. What's it going?
Good.
You get to work.
Oh.
You get to work. You get these guys to set up tables after they're extracting answers. You'll have to go outside to go to the bathroom tonight? You have to get your all filled up here?
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
Good.
Yeah, looks like a, awesome. Fifteen millimeter sound.
No, if somebody wants money, I have to use it. Turn it just a hair. As good as it gets.
I know, and I do a lot of, he's one of the males. Where is he?
Yeah, looks like a, awesome.
Fifteen millimeter sound.
Oh, if somebody wants money, I have to use it.
Turn it just a hair.
As good as it gets.
I know, and I do a lot of, where?
Oh, oh really?
Better really.
Huh.
We did good. Save it all.
two thousand fifteen order. We do have a quorum. I ask ten pledges politely.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Through the agenda in accordance with the open meeting law, and here placed all agenda items on the table for discussion, with the addition of five approved bike purchases for parking lot improvement. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll say.
Got a motion by Councilman Hanson, and second by Councilman Lowdrand. They approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Approve the minutes, copy the minutes for a special work session, meeting on May fourth, two thousand fifteen, and regular meeting of May fourth, two thousand fifteen are closed. What's the wish of the council?
I'll move to examine this.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Conopla, second by Alderman Hurcock. They approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Approve the bills, Mr. Gushick.
Page one. See a lot of advertising for janitor health, they must've broke that up into different departments.
Three different departments, right? Because they, he works, or that person works in all three departments.
The hometown planning, zoning, can you explain that whole thing?
That's Ben Olson, our planning and zoning person.
Okay, that's, gotta get familiar with that name, hometown planning, then, okay. Page two.
Can I ask one question about the top of page one? Or, I see a refund?
Yes.
Someone closes, we refund what their fee was for the remainder of the year?
For the remainder, yes, we do.
Okay. I think the new app, the person that puts in the new application would pick up from that area from that point.
If there is a new applicant right now, there's not.
This surprised me because when I pay for my license for the year, if I use it for two days, I pay a fee for the year.
Our, our city code actually provides that in certain instances that we would, we would refund the permit, and this fell within those instances.
Okay, on to page two.
CTC lease payment, it falls under non-departmental economic development? CTC, is that like the, greater CTC?
Correct, and that is a lease payment that we have a joint loan to them, or a joint lease to them with, ranging via the Initiative Foundation of Community Development. So when the payment comes in, then we pay a portion of that payment to those three entities.
Um, the Lex Messenger, is that a good source for advertising, or?
It's a way to reach some minority type.
Okay, okay.
Do some advertising that way.
Which is a good idea. Page four. And page seven is the final tally on everything, so I'll make a motion to approve the bills for checks nine zero seven seven five through nine zero eight seven three, totaling three hundred sixty-four thousand one hundred forty-four dollars and forty-five cents.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Councilman Hanson. Pay the bills, check number nine zero seven seven five through nine zero eight seven three, three sixty-four, one forty-four, forty-five. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Uh, awards, donations, presentations, we have none tonight. Consent agenda, animal control report, April two thousand fifteen, received. Application for sale fireworks, temporary structure, Walmart, sixteen thirty-four, approved. Building department report, April two thousand fifteen, received. Community services advisory board minutes, March two thousand fifteen, received. Damn festival, Damn Festival Organization Incorporated, dance parade show, temporary on sale, malt beverage, temporary roadway, and sidewalk closings, June nineteenth and twentieth, two thousand fifteen, approved. Economic development authority minutes, April two thousand fifteen, received. Housing redevelopment authority minutes, April two thousand fifteen, received. Police department report, April two thousand fifteen, received. Public works department report, April two thousand fifteen, received. Preservation of Justin McGonig, Planning Commission, accept. Restroom grant to application, Little Falls Area Red Complex, BNSF Foundation, and Nye Burger Foundation, authorized. Solicitors license, one year, JV Showmore Agency, approved. Temporary on sale malt beverage license, arts in the park event, Damn Festival Organization Incorporated, June two thousand eleven, or June eleventh, two thousand fifteen, approved. Waste water treatment facility report, April two thousand fifteen, received. Water treatment facility report, April two thousand fifteen, received. What's the wish of the council for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Alderman Hurcock, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. If that item, B Bravo, application for sale of fireworks, looked at that application form, distance from nearest church, nearest school and church, what's the distance requirement?
I don't know, it could be.
Normally, those things are three or five hundred feet.
It's not two plus miles though, right? Because in two plus miles from Walmart, I can get to the west side of town. So that, it's within two, two plus miles puts it in range, if you, that's by driving. If you, if you did it as the crow flies, I could get to Lincoln School. It'd be basically every church and school in town. My point is, and I don't imagine the applicant is here, but I just wanna state that it's important to be thorough and factual on these applications, and plus, when we're reviewing them before they're presented, it's, I think it's a small thing here, but it's something Nearest church by my measure is seven tenths of a mile, so if we're confident that meets the distance requirements, I will have no further questions.
Councilman, it's within one hundred and fifty feet of a school when in session, or church buildings, or residential premises.
Plenty of space.
Residential premises. Yeah, I mean, that's so, that's, I presume, right, that's talking about.
One hundred and fifty feet wouldn't be.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Just had a thought of that one, Mike?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Consent agenda is approved. The public hearings, old business golf course. Orderment seventy-three, meant City Chapter Code, section two point two nine, delete golf advisory board. Able to introduce?
We have, if I can, Mr. Chairman, Mayor, the three items that we have talked about, we actually talked about an additional one there, two, Ordinance seventy-three, meant chapter two sixty, two twenty-nine of the City Code related to Golf Advisory Board. The recommendation would be to have that ordinance introduced tonight, you would then have the approval at your next meeting. The job description, item number two, I'd suggest we hold on that for now. Possibility of a couple of adjustments there. The policy, number fifty-seven, I would suggest you move forward with the policy, and as long as we're moving forward with the deleting of Golf Advisory Board, the policy really doesn't have much to do with that, but I think the policy should be put in place as soon as possible since the season has started. And then, an additional item there, well, included with the policy, policy number fifty-seven, you'd also delete policies twenty-nine and thirty, as I had mentioned in my, my memo, that have been incorporated into policy fifty-seven. And then the fourth item there, and you can wait probably till their next meeting with the point of liaison to the golf course. I mean, you can either do that tonight if you're ready, or you can do that at your next meeting, whichever works for you. The season has started, the sooner we get the policies and procedures put into place and the liaison appointed, the better.
On item one, we're going to introduce, do we have to just introduce and then wait?
Yes.
Okay, so I can't make a motion, we introduce, approve, and get this done?
We sure could, but your charter doesn't allow that.
Thank you.
It was a statutory city, you could.
So, ordinance number seventy-three, have a motion to introduce?
You have a motion to introduce.
I'll second.
Thanks, though. Your golf course superintendent, job description, we will, do we need any action or just hold off?
No, I just won't put that.
Table it?
Till the next meeting, yep.
And you motion to table or?
You can't, hey, you can do a motion to table till the next meeting. So. Second.
Motion by Councilman Conopla, second by Mayor Zelka, to table till next meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries, job description table. Policy number fifty-seven, golf course rules, regulations, policies and procedures, adopt, along with the deleting of policy number twenty-nine and policy number thirty. Should we do that all in one, or do we wanna do?
Do it all.
Okay, okay. What's the wish of the council?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Alderman Hurcock, second by Councilman Hanson. To approve policy number fifty-seven and delete policy twenty-nine and thirty. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Is there anything else we need to? Allow, do you wanna point the liaison, or?
Um, I would make a motion to appoint Leif Hansen as the liaison from the council to the golf course. I think that's, I'll explain that.
Second.
I'll second then.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilman Conopla, to approve Leif Hansen as the liaison for the golf course. Discussion?
I would just say that I believe it's a good fit because it would be someone that's accessible to the, since Leif does play some golf, it would be somebody that's accessible to people that are on the course, and also, as we move forward, that, that doesn't mean that people can't come to any one of us at this, at this table with concerns or comments or.
Could end that. Hopefully good.
Any other discussion?
Is this something I need to abstain from?
There's no monetary component. And also, you know, I would ask to, Councilmember Hanson, that if issues come up, be sure to let us know, we'll get them on the agenda, we'll get them handled as soon as we can.
I look forward to all the unsolicited advice.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations. Administer position profile, salary range, timelines, job descriptions, consider to approve. What is the wish of the council?
Should we be doing this one at a time, like Harry said? So I would make a motion to approve the profile.
Profile? Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, and second by Alderman Hurcock, to approve the position profile. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Next, approve the salary range?
I make a motion, approve salary range presented to us.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Councilman Conopla, to approve the salary range. City administrator position, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I asked, he didn't mention, you know, when you talk about the salary range, you didn't authorize advertisement. I think you should, I mean, you're talking, you approve the position description, you haven't authorized the advertising for the position, which he wants to do tomorrow, and he intends to do. I think it's just a technical thing that I'd like to see in the minutes, that the council actually took action, authorized the advertising for the position within the salary range that was discussed earlier.
I'll make that motion.
If you don't, yeah, if you don't mind, make or second or the motion, if you agree with what I just said, and you could just acknowledge that, and we'll amend it accordingly.
I'll agree to that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
And once again, for clarification, Dan did state that, but the salary range is eighty three thousand, one hundred and eight thousand, that's always stupid crap.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, does anyone have some? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. And the timelines?
Job description. He didn't say that you had to take action.
The timelines, just to understand that July thirty, thirty-first, almost like it's okay with everybody, so we'll use that for the interviews. All right. What's the wish of the council on approving the city manager job description?
Make that motion. Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hurcock, second by Councilman Lowdrand, to approve the job description as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Airport commission recommendations, Greg? Resolution twenty fifteen forty-five?
Yeah, resolution twenty fifteen dash forty-five, the airport commission is recommending purchasing two parcels of property, one on the north end of the airport, one on the south end of the airport. The first one that we have in front of you is for Kent Regland, that's the parcel on the north end of the property. If you look at the screen over here, you can kinda see the area that we were looking at, at purchasing. When we ultimately do the Crossman Runway reconstruction or construction, this particular parcel would be in the Brona Protection Zone, so we'd have to purchase that property to make sure that no structures or anything that would impact in the event that an airplane were to come down in that area, to make sure that we own it and make sure that we maintain it as a safe area. So tonight, we're recommending approval of the acquisition of the property for, from Kent Regland in resolution twenty fifteen dash forty-five.
What's the wish of the council on resolution twenty fifteen forty-five?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilman Gushick, second by Mayor Zelka, to approve resolution twenty fifteen. Any discussion?
Uh, property value lines up pretty much what it's worth.
That's correct. We did a appraisal on the property, we were slightly. That's correct, we did a appraisal on the property, we were slightly, we negotiated with the sellers, we were slightly over with that, we consulted with the FAA in terms of if that was still agreeable in terms of their reimbursements amount, and it was, so again, tonight we're recommending approval of that parcel.
Greg, two things, just in case somebody, to exempt for the first time, you know, I always beat this around about where the taxes come from, and how the city and the county go together on that, but also, would you explain what that land, you did say Crosswind Runway?
Correct.
Would you explain why that's needed to our airport?
For our airport, it provides additional coverage in the event that the wind is coming from a different direction, you can't use the main runway. This allows, I believe it's over ninety-five percent landability, so in the event that, for whatever reason, you can't get on the main runway, you could then land on this particular runway safely and not have to go to another airport, whether or not you had to deal with it, so that's what we'd be looking for, the reason for that Crosswind Runway. It was also part of our master plan, in terms of what the FAA suggested that we look at. We couldn't keep the exact same alignment that we currently have because of wetland impacts, we had to tweak it a little bit, which is another reason that kind of dictated the acquisition of this parcel.
And this Crosswind Runway is something the FAA pretty much is requiring?
Yes.
This states that this acreage is not, or is vacant of any structures, how close does his residence come to this?
There is a residence, right up here, I believe, is where Mr. Regland actually lives, there's also residence over here, and I think that's the closest ones in this area.
Greg, would you touch on that tax of the other center, and where the federal tax dollars actually come from?
For this particular parcel, there's a ninety-ten grant split, so we'll be getting ninety percent from the federal, ten percent on the local side of it. MinDOT is giving an additional five percent, so it would be ninety percent from the federal level, five percent from the state, and then another five percent split between the city and the county in terms of the purchase of the property. The federal tax dollars come from a trust fund that they have put away, and the interest and, that they receive on that is what goes towards the purchase, or the federal funds that they distribute out.
Thank you. Yep. So basically, the city's portion would be two and a half percent?
Correct.
Any other questions, discussion?
Yes, with residences reasonably close, are we in store for some noise complaints?
With this being the Crosswind Runway, it's not going to be used all that much, but it could be used at some point in time, you know, in terms of more than a grass runway is now. We may have some noise, you know, and some additional traffic in there, but it's not going to be too considerable, I wouldn't expect.
How long before we building that Crosswind Runway?
It's hard to tell, right now, we have it in our capital improvement plan for five years out, but it's all going to be dependent on funding, as well as, you know, local funding, as well as federal funds.
Greg, was there a public hearing on that for, to maybe, is that a one-time thing, we have a couple of public hearings?
I believe, it was before my time, but I believe there was a public hearing for the master plan, which would have shown this parcel, as well as the next parcel in that acquisition, yes.
I remember some neighbors showed up and we did have those discussions.
Yep. Any other questions? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Liljergren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Bushak?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash forty-six, acquisition of property, Greg?
The next parcel that we're looking at here, twenty fifteen dash forty-six, is for the parcel on the south end. That parcel, as you can see here on the screen, the airport is on the north, this is the main runway, and the Crosswind Runway would be going basically from here due north, right into here, so up here is the previous parcel that we were just recently talking about, this is the parcel on the south end that we'd be looking at acquiring with this resolution. Again, the airport is recommending approval of purchasing this parcel, so tonight, we'd be asking for the council's authorization to purchase this parcel under resolution twenty fifteen dash forty-six.
What's the wish of the council?
I'm going to approve resolution twenty fifteen dash forty-six.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Conopla, and second by Alderman Hercock, for resolution twenty fifteen dash forty-six, acquisition of property, any discussion?
This is the same percentage, isn't it?
Correct, yes, yeah.
So, carries, Greg, you see, this is slightly less acreage, but substantially more to me, and is it land just that much higher?
And then, I'm not sure if that's in the packet or the new resolution that was on your desk there, the parcel on the south is a hundred and eight thousand dollars for roughly eleven point nine acres. The one on the north is seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and four dollars for nine and a half acres.
Can I just say nine point five four, or nine point? Nine point five seven three on the one, and you have a twelve point nine three on the new one, okay?
So it is slightly higher, so they gave the agreement with the owner, he must have given a little bit more money.
Well, and they appraised both of them, one is farmland, one is, so they base the values off of that, there's a, an initial appraisal, and then there's a secondary appraisal that happens on it, that somebody has to concur on the original one, and so there's quite a bit that goes into actually determining the value of the parcels.
So ninety thousand dollars, is that typical for farmland?
It is, yes. Well, and there's a number of things that come into play, I mean, it's the farmland, as well as, you know, other amenities, for instance, the one on the south had an irrigation system, so that had to be taken into account as well, and therefore, so all those factors are considered, yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Liljergren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Bushak?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash fifty-three, amendment to grant agreement, number thirty-eight ninety-six, Minnesota Department of Transportation, Office of Aeronautics, accept, Laurie?
This resolution, we currently have an agreement with MinDOT in which they will reimburse us two-thirds, or sixty-six percent of the operating and maintenance costs of the airport. There is some additional funding this year, like last year, and so they have now agreed to reimburse up to seventy-five percent of our operation and maintenance out of the airport, so this resolution would allow us to assign the amendment, to sign the amendment to the agreement.
What's the wish of the council on resolution two thousand fifteen dash fifty-three?
I'll make a motion to accept resolution twenty fifteen dash fifty-three.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Liljergren, second by Councilman Boyum, for resolution twenty fifteen fifty-three, is there any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Liljergren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Bushak?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
Change order number one, linescape, line striping.
The change order number one for our striping project, if you look on the screen in front of, or behind me here, we, in the original bid, we had the bicycle die included in the pavement markings, but we got going into the project, it was noticed that the lane and the arrows portion of it should be striped as well, just to make sure that all the markings are consistent in terms of legibility, so the change order number one includes painting of those two additional pavement markings throughout the project, and the amount of one thousand four hundred and eighty dollars from linescape.
What's the wish of the council? Second. Got a motion by Mayor Zelka, second by Councilman Bushak, to approve change order one on linescape, line striping. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, real quick, just, is it a case where we didn't ask for what we wanted, or?
True.
Okay, yeah. Half of them's good enough for me.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Change order number one, Northland Drilling, abandoned well sealing.
With our well sealing project, we ran into some difficulties on our second well that we were looking at, that sealing. Our original estimate was for six hours, in the bid that we had asked from the various drilling companies, it actually ended up accounting for eight hours to clean the wells out before they could actually seal them, so tonight, we're looking to compensate the contract of the additional two hours. The additional two hours, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars per hour, is consistent with their bid price, so tonight, we're looking for approval to approve change order number one, in the amount of five hundred dollars for Northland Drilling.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Bushak, second by Alderman Hercock, change order number one, Northland Drilling, five hundred dollars. Any discussion?
What was the original bid?
Three thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars.
This is a little over ten percent, but it's close.
We're still making fun of the grant.
That's true.
Yeah.
That's true.
Is that a cobra?
Yes. And we received a ten thousand dollar grant, and we'll have to offset some of our staff time as well, in terms of digging down and repairing that structure.
Are you or a representative of your office onsite when they're doing something like this?
Yes, it was right in Park Lot, and we were there.
Okay, so, I mean, we just know somebody's not waiting on a shovel for?
True.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Planning Commission recommendation, conditional use request, Anderson Custom Processing, bench site, Greg?
On the last planning commission meeting, we had a conditional use permit request from Anderson Custom Processing. On their south property line, they are looking for approval to go from six feet to eight feet. The planning commission recommended approval of that, that conditional use, so that they could screen their property a little bit more, so tonight, we'd be looking for approval from the council to confirm the planning commission's recommendation of allowing the condition.
What's the wish of the council? Making a motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Bushak, second by Mayor Zelka, to approve conditional use for Anderson Custom Processing, bench site, discussion?
Yeah, I took a look at it, doesn't infringe on any kind of line of sight or anything like that, I see it's in place.
And there, I know when we had talked to them last, we said that they put the post up, and lean the fence upward, so I'll be honest, I haven't went to look to see if they fastened the rail, but our structural, they can lean it there, but not install it at the time.
Doesn't seem to interfere with any kind of safety issues or anything, so I'm looking at approving it.
I just have the same question I did last time, when I saw an application where the applicant is different than the property owner, and I tried searching online, I couldn't get anything for NRFC holdings.
In the, the application, there is a spot for the owner to assign, as well as if it's somebody different, I believe NRFC is Anderson Custom Processing, so they are one and the same.
Okay, well, that's what I was looking for, I couldn't find a link when I was searching online, and selected the whole property where the names were different, that caught my attention. And then, I agree with Mr. Bushak, there's nothing offensive about the fence, other than the fact that it's about eighty percent constructed already by the time it comes to us for approval. Think we're going in the reverse order here, but I have no further objection.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries, resolution twenty fifteen dash forty-two, vacate drainage and utility easement, lot three, sunrise addition.
We held a public hearing at our planning commission meeting, the Petersons, which are the applicant here, currently own lot eighteen, nineteen, and a half of lot twenty, there's currently a drainage and utility easement going, basically on the lot line between lots nineteen and twenty, they recently have a purchase agreement on their house and shed over here to sell this portion of it, and they'd like to vacate this drainage easement and grant the city a drainage easement down this portion of it, so that this can be more of a usable lot for, for the owners. The planning commission recommends approval of this, so tonight, we'd be looking for approval of resolution twenty fifteen dash forty-two to vacate the drainage easement contingent upon acquiring the drainage easement on the south of, on lot twenty.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Bushak, second by Alderman Hercock, to approve resolution twenty fifteen dash forty-two, vacate drainage easement, and, or drainage and utility easement, is there any discussion?
Yeah, when we have this discussion, I was talking to Greg, and it looks like the property they're willing to exchange looks like a better place with drainage than the existing one, which makes more sense.
Yeah.
As far as utility easements, it's really not that much of a difference, so.
Correct, in terms of, it would, the new one would still be drainage and utility, so we wouldn't be losing anything at that point.
Any other discussion? Resolution, call a roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Bushak?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Liljergren?
Yes.
Carries, resolution twenty fifteen dash forty-three, acquisition of property, easement, lot twenty, sunrise, Greg?
With this resolution, that's the approval to obtain or acquire that drainage easement on the south, now that we're looking at vacating that one in between the middle of the block, so tonight, again, we'd be looking for approval, so that we can have the drainage and utility easement through that parcel.
What's the wish of the council?
I'm going to, we accept twenty fifteen dash forty-three.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilman Liljergren, to approve resolution twenty fifteen forty-three, any discussion?
Let's see, it's going to cost us ten dollars, like. It's somewhere it can, can be paid, but I don't, I guess we'll deal with it.
Any other discussion? Resolution, call a roll, please.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Bushak?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Liljergren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash fifty-four, first quarter two thousand fifteen donations, adopt, Laurie?
This resolution, two thousand fifteen dash fifty-four, is a listing of donations that we received the first quarter of two thousand and fifteen.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty fifteen dash fifty-four.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hansen, second by Mayor Zelka, to approve resolution twenty fifteen fifty-four, first quarter donations, any discussion?
I used to see someone wants to donate some money for a speed sign.
Just to thank you, just to thank you for donating, just to.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Hansen?
Yes.
Bushak?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Liljergren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution twenty fifteen dash fifty-five, acquisition of property, and Teresa Gottwald, donation, consider, Greg?
The city's been approached by Mr. and Mrs. Gottwald in terms of land donation, parcel that they're looking at donating to the city, if you look at, on the screen behind me, here on the south part of the screen is our Sultan Sand Shed, we do currently own all of this property, they're looking at donating this parcel to the city, we did speak with the, or did speak with the park board, they're in favor of acquiring that land, it's still yet to be determined what it would actually be used for, but it would be nice to have additional buffer from the Sultan's Sand Shed, and so this would, would allow us to, to achieve that. So tonight, we're looking for. So tonight, we're looking for approval to acquire that, or allow the donation of that parcel to the city a little bit.
What's the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Bushick, second by Councilman Canopla. Resolution twenty fifteen dash fifty-five. Any discussion?
Yeah, I spoke to some people at the school. Didn't have any interest in that property at some point. Could work out something with the city, using it for an environmental studies area. So that's a possibility, so there would be a use for it versus just acquiring it to maintain it. And the land itself to the gutwolds really has no purpose because you can't build on it. It's pretty much low land.
Yeah, the only parcel that is upland is up over in here, and really, there's no access to that parcel. The vast majority of it is low land, so it does serve in terms of stormwater bounce in case we get a large rain event. So there is, there is a benefit to having it, and I would agree that there's probably mutual benefit to the city and probably the school, and maybe others that will be able to use that parcel.
I'm glad to hear that we can put it to some use, because it'll be taking it off the tax road. And to just do that, to let it sit there, other than a use as a buffer or whatever?
Yeah, we did.
Citizens would be concerned how we'd be doing that.
We did look at the taxes on that particular parcel, it was pretty minimal, I think it was like three hundred dollars a year. So it's not as if there was a whole lot being taken off the tax load, but it is still some, so, yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Bushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Boyum?
Yes.
Perkoff?
Yes.
Liljergren?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hamfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Carries.
Approve buy purchase, parking lot improvement?
When we started doing some work on our parking lot out here, we were looking at removing some of the vaults that were in the, in the parking lot. There's a number of vaults, piping, et cetera, that's located in there over the years, because this was originally the water treatment plant. The city's old water tower sat on the northwest corner of the parking lot as well. So there was a number of piping that was installed in the parking lot. At the time, it had a use, when a lot of that stuff changed, use came down. Some of that piping was plugged and left in place. And so what we had is kind of a spider web, if you will, of lines that were throughout the parking lot. We dug down, we found a leak on one of the pipes, it was actually one of our larger pipes, it was a fourteen inch pipe, cast iron. And we were able to temporarily plug it, but the concern is that there's more joints that may be, that may be leaking. And so we looked at what our options were in terms of repairing that portion of it. If you look on the screen behind me, the red is what we were originally planning on removing with the project. The blue is what we originally came up with if we were just to patch where we found the leaks on that water main. And that parcel, that cost right there alone for the material was about twenty-five thousand dollars for just that fix. And so we started looking at other options. If we're going to spend that kind of money, we want to make sure that we get as much bang for our buck and clean up as much as we can. So we started looking at other options, and you'll see behind me, the blue line is what we're proposing to do with the latest proposal. We'll be replacing about a hundred and sixty feet of that fourteen inch water main that's no longer made with a sixteen inch water main that has fittings more readily available. The difficult part that we're running into is on both ends, where we tie into the fourteen inch. We are able to find reducers to go down to that fourteen inch, they're actually coming out of Texas for them, and we're literally looking everywhere around the U.S. to get these parts. But we're looking at replacing that section of it. The material cost alone is about forty thousand dollars, and then we would have some installation costs on that. So tonight, we're looking for approval for a cost not too big, I would say fifty thousand dollars, just to give us some room in terms of the installation of that material as well, to fix the water main with that. Those funds coming out of the water improvement fund.
What is the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Liljergren, second by Councilman Hanson. They approve up to fifty thousand. Any discussion?
Does that take care of everything that'll be underneath the parking lot, so we wouldn't have to rip it up again to fix something else?
It'll take care of a lot of it, but not all of it.
How much are we leaving short?
We are.
Looking at your drawing, I was kind of hoping we'd be on the south side of the parking lot and the north side of Second Avenue.
The blacktop that we've removed basically lines up with the edge of this. Here's our well, this is the east, or the east entrance. We're basically pulling this blacktop off here, so we're getting as relatively as close as we came to it on this side. We do have a fourteen inch main that goes to the north. The difference between this one and this line here, this was original to this building. The line going north was installed at a little bit later date, so it's a little bit newer. We'll look to see what condition that pipe is in when we're able to connect up to it. The good news is a sixteen inch water main is easier to obtain as opposed to the fourteen inch. And so if for whatever reason we don't find anything here that we can connect up to, we can still get a stick of sixteen inch pipe, a little bit easier in terms of readily available than we would a fourteen inch. So we'd be looking at, we can get it and extend it if we find areas that are bad, I guess, is what I'm saying.
That sixteen inch going up and south?
This is fourteen inch right here. This is a fourteen inch line, this is, and these two over here are fourteen inch lines. And the fourteen inches are the ones that are harder to come by. So once we, once we've got the fitting, the sixteen by fourteen reducer, we can kind of put those wherever we need to in terms of connecting into sound pipe. So that gives us some flexibility.
You'll have a few extra of those if you order?
With the fourteen inch or the sixteen inch?
Reducers?
We are getting, I think, three of them. We're getting three of those fourteen inch by sixteen inch reducers. We're getting additional sleeves for the fourteen inch, just in case, you know, something, you know, way up here, two years down the road breaks, so that we can fix that portion of it. Those sixteen by fourteen reducers are pretty expensive, those have the cost of. So that's why we didn't get a whole bunch of extra ones, as opposed to just getting the fourteen inch where we need to replace that. So we are getting some spare parts for that fourteen inch as well, in the event that something breaks.
Something as a new mainline can be sixteen inch, so whatever part you have to push off from that is all going to be sixteen inch, do you have to reduce down?
In that section, yeah. We're getting up on a hundred and sixty feet worth of pipe, yes.
So you only got three lines we have to tap into, so three reducers will be sufficient?
That's correct.
Fix the parking lot?
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
But that's going to leave us with fourteen inch pipe under the parking lot?
With some fourteen inch under the parking lot, yes.
Well, how much more is it?
We'd have to go all the way over to, basically to the water plant, and then we'd have to go north on First Street, northeast here, up to Thirteenth. Well, just out of the parking lot, we would have to get probably another two hundred feet worth of pipe.
Okay, a sixteen inch.
A sixteen inch.
PVC. So would it be?
If we, if we find out the pipe is extremely poor, we may end up doing that. I'm optimistic that it's not going to be, I'm hopeful that it's not, that we'll find some solid pipe that we can connect up into.
But I'm just Larry, I'll leave a fourteen inch pipe under the parking lot?
Nope, I understand, I understand. And that's why we went, that's why we went as far as we did. You know, we're looking at, this is where we pulled out the blacktop, too, and so that's why we kind of put the termination point where we did. Just because we didn't want to have to keep digging out more of the blacktop, that was in decent shape.
How long is that blacktop going to last?
Projected, probably about twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years. So you're looking at these fourteen inch pipes, going to make an assessment if they're going to last, that means twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Do we feel comfortable if, do we think we would?
Yeah.
Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, same sign. Motion carries. Any kind of reports from boards, bureaus, committees? Any announcements? Hearing none, oversets are closed, City Council meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Ted thirteen D point zero five subdivision three, one to discuss land purchase price.